Special budget work session meeting to order. Welcome everyone who is joining us remotely. At this time, we'll move to the invocation and prayer. We ask that Minister and Councilmember DJ Hair will give us the prayer, following which we ask that you please stand and then we can repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Hair?
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, we come to you humbly asking you and thanking you for just taking care of us. We continue to ask and thank you, Father, for what you are doing for our men and women that are fighting abroad, those that are helping and supporting countries that are in need of our help. We continue to ask you, Father, to look over on our city, our cities and states across the country. We ask you, Father, to continue to look over on favorable North Carolina and what we may be facing. We ask you to continue to open up the city council's minds, that we will have open minds to agenda items that come our way. Lord, there's so much that we can ask you for, and there's so much that we can thank you for. We continue to thank you for keeping the pandemic, the COVID, in distances away, Lord. We continue to ask you for healing in our bodies, everyone around this diocese, everyone that's in with us tonight. We ask you, Father, to look over on staff. We thank you for a great staff. We thank you for a great police and fire department, Father. And as we dig into the numbers tonight, the city's budget, the citizens' money, we ask you, Father, to let, open our minds that we will use and budget their money correctly in the best of our abilities and the best for our citizens of Fayetteville. And all of these things, Lord, we ask you these things in your son's name, Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, as we move to the agenda, I'd like to bring note to one particular item. As we consider approval of the agenda, I know item 5.1 was the Dogwood Festival, which I thought was coming to a regular work session so that we could actually speak to them about whatever the vision for the city and a little bit more clarity on their circumstance. So maybe if you approved it, Jen, if you would consider tabling that to the next work session.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
You had a question, Councilmember?
Can we have discussion on that?
Sure. So did have a motion, a second by Councilmember Wright and Hair, but discussion, Councilmember Ingram?
So, yeah, I was fully prepared to have this discussion tonight. Mr. Manager, if possible, if we could send some items, because I know for me, I wanted to see how, what their revenue was and kind of break down what they kind of spend on. Could we, could I, could we email kind of the questions and for them to be prepared to present to us of exactly kind of what we're looking for? I know what the concerns are on our behalf, but there are some inner working things that I would like to understand better as well before, so we can really be prepared to have that conversation. But do you know when they are prepared to come and speak with us? Will it be this coming Monday work session?
Probably not. We have a full agenda already on Monday, but we can ask if they'd be available. If not, it'd come in August.
Okay, quick question. If we are, we have to approve the budget by when?
Well, the budget's approval, if we want, chose to do it, it could be two separate things. So if you chose, Council chose to do it.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, right. So I wouldn't be interested in having this a part of the approval or any type of allocation. Maybe hold it until we have that conversation with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion on this item? All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Hair to approve with the modification of 5.1 being tabled to the August work session. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Show of hands, those in favor?
Davis, great.
All right, so, thank you, Councilmember Davis. Welcome, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, that's motions nine, oh, motion carries. Item 5.2, Ms. Rivera, how are you? Doing well.
That might be better.
Pardon me, Olivera, not Rivera, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Before we get started with the presentation tonight, I would like to introduce you all to a member of our office who is being my right hand tonight. Assistant Director Sexton is out. Her oldest daughter is graduating from high school today, and so she was off. And so my right hand for this evening is Ms. Gail Suttles Battle. Okay, so we tabled that. If we can start by going over our parking lot, and then we'll talk again about our fund balance, and then get into the CIP and TIP review and finish up with our next steps. So we only had one item on our parking lot last time, and that was to increase all positions to $15 per hour, and that's all seasonal, part-time employees of the city. So this table shows you the eight positions that we discussed last time and what their currently, current hourly rate is, their proposed hourly rate. And then there was a question about the ages of those employees. There are 279 people currently employed by the city in these eight positions. So you can see 76 of them are 18 years old and under, 96 are between 19 and 29, 20 are between 30 and 39, and 26 are between 40 and 49, 32, 50 to 59, and then 29 are 60 and up. In order to move those current hourly rates to a minimum of $15, and you can see we're maintaining the same distance. If you look at that proposed hourly rate, we were maintaining the same distance that they had previously from their current rate. So some positions, the lifeguard maintained a higher level, one, a higher level than just a field supervisor. So that impact, to make that change based on the estimated total hours per position, will be about $484,000 a year, and that does include FICA and workers' comp. Are there any questions on that slide?
I did, yes, ma'am. So, looking at this, the model that we're using basically has some of these positions, which are probably seasonal in nature, you know, swimming, lifeguards, summertime, we can anticipate that. Some of the other positions, is it better to do it in a way that we're doing it or to have a salary staff expand some of their duties for keeping score or some, someone that we already have on staff?
I think that Parks and Rec, the staffing model that they used, I haven't had any feedback from them that they're not pleased with it. I don't know who is here tonight from Parks and Rec, but this is the way they have staffed it for several years, and it has worked and been successful for them. The only change that we've had recently, in the last few years, has been the lifeguards. We used to contract with the YMCA for those positions, and that contract negotiations, at one point, Parks and Rec requested that they become our temp seasonal folks. I think with the coverage that they need, being so broad at all of our rec centers, this seems to be the model that works best.
Okay, Counsel, any other questions for regarding this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
All right, so Councilmember Kinston and then Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I said before, I have a concern with that 18-year-old and under group, as it shows it has a 27% and about 76 total employees. My concern again is the fact that we have city employees that are older, that just recently made $15 an hour, and we have 18-year-olds, as you mentioned, that don't have the same responsibility. They're going to be coming in making, even though they're temporary, making the same thing. And I have a concern with that. So I want that just on record, thank you.
Right, and duly noted, but I think the way that I view it is 18-years-old is considered an adult. You know, there's debate now about whether he can join the military, buy firearms, so on and so forth. So some 18-year-olds have the same, I mean, I certainly know they pay the same rate in gas and expenses to live. You know, it's an assumption to think that because they're 18, they mean they have some of the life restraints. But I think when we set a floor to say that our organization is, wants to pay people a livable amount, I don't know, in my opinion, if it discriminates, but I understand your point, so I'll go to.
Is there a way that we can find out? Because I understand you're saying 18. I've got an 18-year-old, so I completely understand that. But it's 18-year-old and under. Do we know what that gap difference is?
I think I have it on my computer. I know that the youngest was 14, so it was 14 to 18.
All right, Councilmember Davis, and you'll get that for us, right?
I can probably pull it up in just a minute.
Okay, Councilmember Davis, you have a question?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to listen to, I take your question, because I was listening to what Councilwoman Kinston was talking about, about the gaps between, when it goes $15 an hour, that'll affect the upward, the upward salaries and whatnot, so I'm good, I'm just listening.
Okay, Mr. Manager, you had something?
Yes, sir, we wanted to probably be very sensitive here, is that we don't want to run into any concerns about age discrimination. So the, I think the main takeaway here, also, in addition to what, this was for seasonal, part-time employees, as we had reported last time, we had already made that change for our regular, full and part-time staff. As some of you have indicated, this too puts compression pressures on some of those other staff members who before had a difference. But understanding, as y'all have said, and said very clearly, that this was the interest of council, this is what it would take. But just be fairly sensitive about the discussing based on age.
All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, I'll make it really quickly, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing up that, the age discrimination piece. As I've been in situations as a, as a young person in a room to be denied of a certain pay grade because of age and not experience. So my question is, when we're looking at that 18 and over and that, and that $15 salary range, I would hope, is it by, say, as we look at the manager and city attorney, do we do for those positions, not theirs, but these, I'm just trying to relate, do we do a six-month evaluation, pay increase, or is it by experience or how long they've been with the organization that would determine a pay increase for individuals who are trying to make their way above the 15 or even just above period for these types of positions?
For our regular, full and part-time, they are staggered in that regard. For some of the others, I do not believe that their salaries were necessarily adjusted, but I see Michael came in. If he could come forward, as the majority of these positions are in his area.
And I will add, before, before I got on council, my brother is a Parks and Rec, what is it, scorekeeper, and he makes what he makes doing that. And, you know, we don't necessarily have complaints about that because we recognize he's still a student, he's still in school. You know, you got to be a student first, and most of these students are, you know, most of these 18 and under, they're students, and you want to make sure they're students first, anything after that is a luxury or a way to build up whatever skill you want to gain, such as being a lifeguard, scorekeeper, and whatnot. So that was just my perspective. Again, thank you, Mr. Manager, for bringing the age up, but I did want to at least ask about that tearing up in terms of longevity. Thank you.
Was there a question?
I asked it, Mr. Manager answered it, but he did call you up for, I don't know, but he did answer my question.
Well, I'm reinforcing the manager.
Okay, yeah, he answered my question, thank you.
Councilmember Banks, McLafferty?
Thank you, Mayor. Although I do understand, as we talk about the ages, but we do have to realize, as we, you know, as our slogan, we are a can-do city, and I think that this is a start. We always speak of wanting to be able to be compatible, keep our employees, and we want them, and we want our people to stay here and not go to other places. Although these, this is just Parks and Recreation, I think that it's a start, and it's a great opportunity for the people in our community, teenagers, adults. It's, I think it's a win-win for everybody, so I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you. All right, Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Olivera before she proceeds to the next section?
I'll have that breakdown for you, sir, if you still would like that. So of the 76, four of those folks are 14, 16 of them are 15-year-olds, 25 of them are 16-year-olds, 20 of them are 17-year-olds, and 11 of them are 18-year-olds.
And what type of qualifications do they have to have to do this? So a 14-year-old would have to have the same qualifications as a 30-year-old, right?
My understanding is that the only positions that are required to have qualifications are the lifeguard positions, and they do have to pass CPR tests, swim tests, and I think there's one other test that our lifeguards have to pass.
So they perform the same duties as a 30-year-old?
If you're a 30-year-old lifeguard, you have to perform the same, you have to meet the same criteria as a 14-year-old lifeguard, yes, sir.
All right, Counsel, any other questions before Ms. Olivera proceeds?
Thank you. So now we can transition and talk about our general fund, fund balance again. Since we're moving forward with the change to $15 an hour, we had to adjust that fund balance usage. Our projected fund balance in excess of our 12% goal will be about 12.7 million. Again, we'll assign the 5.07 cents for our capital funding plan, which is 7.3 million, and then the 1.42 cents for our Parks and Rec bond, which is 2 million. And that'll leave us about 3.4 million above the 12%, which equates to 13.81% of the FY '23 budgeted expenditures. Were there any questions about that before I go on to our capital funding plan?
No, ma'am, but they're coming.
So for our capital funding plan, we had received some questions about how much of the capital funding plan was assigned at June 30th, 2021, and it was $5.8 million that was assigned to pay debt for subsequent years, and then only $285,000 was unassigned. So this slide is kind of a precursor to the coming slides about our CIP and our TIP. So our CIP and TIP, as we talked about last week, we've got about $27 million worth of projects.
Ms. Olivera, before you proceed, the book, the smaller book, has some of the CIP items that specifically are related to ARPA, so just I want to make sure we're all tracking.
Yes, sir. And we have tables in the presentation too, that will show those. So the chart that you're looking at shows our expenditures, which primarily is debt for our capital funding plan. The red line is our dedicated revenue sources, which is primarily the 5.07 cents on the tax rate. As our existing debt is retired, and we don't take on additional debt for big projects because we're trying to use other people's money for that, for big things as we can and spend it down within the deadline of those funding sources, we're going to create this lovely area right under the red line, but above the tan. And that is where you will have your capital funding plan reserved fund balance, and it will grow year over year, as you can see on the chart, until we start assigning more debt to be paid out of our capital funding plan. So now when we transition to get into our CIP highlights, the green items on the slides are items that we have identified as potentially being funded by ARPA funds. We have some work to do. Clearly, we'll come back to you and get guidance from council, and we would have to bring an appropriation action to you before we could spend any money, ARPA or otherwise, for these projects. But these are just some that we've identified, and we're trying, we're hopeful we can fund this through the ARPA. So our airport projects are fully funded using airport funds or federal guidelines. We may have to take on some debt that the airport will carry for the consolidated car rental facility, but that's in a couple of years, and so we're not asking you for any action on that. Then when we look at our economic development projects, the commercial corridor revitalization program, and one thing that you'll notice in the green highlighted projects, most of them only have a funding amount in fiscal year 2023. And what we're trying to do with those projects is accelerate them. So we're not showing that we're going to put any ARPA funding to them in the outer years because if it's a project that we're going to fund using ARPA, when we come to you and ask for you to approve it, we're going to appropriate it all at that time and hopefully spend it down quickly, so we meet that deadline and don't have any of those funds expire on us. Under general government, we've got our ADA compliance, where we make upgrades to our facilities to make them ADA compliant. Our building maintenance, we've got about $1.9 million in that, that we could accelerate potentially. Then Makerspace, Martin Luther King Junior Park, our picnic shelter replacements and refurbishments, our playground repairs and refurbishments, the Sherwood Park Recreation Center that you guys approved for us to move forward with earlier in this fiscal year, the Blanton Road Extension, our bridge preservation program, our dam safety preservation program, our downtown streetscapes, Hensdale Road, intersection improvements, multi-use lanes, some of our sidewalks, and some of our thoroughfare street lighting. This slide represents what we have received so far of state grant funds. Last week, when we talked about our potential use of ARPA funding for some projects and how it would allow us to hold on to our money for grant matches, this, these funds will also do that for us. So these, all of these you have already appropriated, with the exception of the $1 million for the Affordable Housing Trust. We have not brought that to you yet, but it will be forthcoming. So all of these projects and amounts should seem familiar to you. Then talking about our TIP, there are fewer projects in the TIP. I think there are only three that we kind of identified as maybe we could fund with ARPA, and that's just a loose maybe. The IT recovery, disaster recovery initiative, the virtual server expansion equipment, and then our city wireless network expansion project. And all of this is very, to use a term that was said to me the other day, squishy. It is not written in stone in any way. It is certainly something that we will have to unpack this funding plan and build it again as we move through spending of $40 million and as we move through the spending of additional grant funding that we receive.
All right, so do have a question, Councilmember Hair, and then I had one question.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Olivera, could you go back to the CIP projects?
Yes, sir.
Well, at least go to the one that has the corridor revitalization, 250K, 250, yes?
Yes, sir.
I asked at our last meeting if we had began to prioritize any additional of the scope of what we've been doing. With this 250, is there an additional, are there some additions added to the scope of what we're doing in the, in our quarters for this particular funding?
Not for this funding, sir, but that doesn't mean that out of the other buckets of ARPA funding that we have available, that those types of additional projects are not in consideration and could not be in consideration. This is just our standard CIP and TIP. And knowing that these types of projects, you guys have already expressed some level of interest in, our staff has expressed the ability to be able to do them to some capacity, we looked at them and said, what can we do that we could do quickly that would benefit the community and take this money out of our CIP and allow us to hold on to it?
So whenever we say quickly, we're looking at the possibilities of smaller projects. When, when, when we go back and look over the CIP, well, these items within the quarters and what some of our targeted scope and goals were, some of our business owners, for example, may need just a little bit. So we were supporting them if it was in wages or wanting to improve signs or improve their businesses in some form of a way. So is that what you're speaking of, of moving quickly and that no new assignments have been made? What we've been doing?
This one is the facade improvements and other qualified expenditures that businesses can use to improve.
Okay, okay, okay. Now, if you would, go to the shelter and, was it bleachers, you know, the?
And benches, yes, sir.
Yeah, the benches.
That's in our transit section.
Yes, now. Now, that is for additional shelters, additional benches, and is there a scope that we are building on what we're trying to do? Because the complaint comes quite often from, from us, from citizens, from citizens to us and from us to you all, how many benches and, really, we would love to have shelters everywhere, but benches and shelters can we get? So, with that amount, what, what are we, what's the scope?
So, if you recall, Mr. Hume spoke to the fact that we had decreased the number of boardings that we were requiring for shelters and benches. So, we are accelerating those. We are accelerating the installation of shelters and benches at our stops based on those guidelines we received from council previously. This item is not highlighted for potential ARPA funding because eighty percent of those expenditures are already funded by the FTA. We only pay twenty percent of it. So, to the extent that we want to use FTA's money, we're also hamstring to buy it.
So, so transit's going to come to us and give us some particular numbers, some numbers in what the, the scope of benches and shelters we're going to be having. We won't get that this evening.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
We actually won't get that until we get the grant from FTA that tells us how much money. This is our guess at what we think they're going to give us. They could give us more. They usually don't give us too much less. But we will have that information in detail when we bring the grant to you for appropriation.
Okay. Thank you for now. There are more to come. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So, Ms. Olivera, so basically if I, if I understand this right, that the proposal that you have here, you basically took five years' worth of contributions and put it in one year, to fund it in one year. So, in other words, fifty thousand dollars a year was being set aside for picnic, shelter replacement, and refurbishing. So, instead of doing it fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, you're doing two fifty at one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you accelerated a lot of these projects by five times. You took five years' worth and doing it in one year, if it qualifies.
Yes, sir.
Which creates some cushion-
As quickly as possible.
That you showed us on the graph for years one through five, because you don't have to put that amount up, you've already pre-funded it this year. So, with that model, right, two questions I have. One is, we're paying cash for Sherwood Park Rec Center, four million dollars. We normally finance rec centers because it's brick and mortar with a lob. Is that a smart use of funds to cash pay for a building when it's something that's finançable? So, that's four million dollars used for that and three point two for a Makerspace, which is also brick and mortar. So, eight million dollars of this ARPA dollars are going to pay for cash for something that we typically finance.
So, not knowing what interest rates are going to do, if they're going to go up with inflation, which they typically do when we're in a situation like we are where we have high inflation. Usually, it is better to cash fund things of that nature. We, when we finance those larger brick and mortar things, we do it for twenty years. So, if we cash fund those items using ARPA funding, we are freeing up twenty years' worth of debt service that we will never have to pay.
Right. But, but I guess my concern was, you know, it's ARPA, it's American Rescue Plan, rescue, key word, rescue. Which means that this is one-time money that you probably won't get in a generation that's used to improve the lives of some people in your community. So, building a building, I don't know, captures that, even though I understand what you're saying. If I've got a hundred thousand dollars in the bank and I want to get a hundred thousand dollar house, did I just write a check for it? But that's not really advisable in the real world to take and pay for a house that you can do a mortgage on.
Right.
So, I do understand the interest rate component, but the city borrows at a, at a very good rate because it's got great credit.
We do.
So, I'm just saying that's an incredible amount of capacity of eight million dollars being used for something that could be used to really rescue a community. I mean, because to me, when I think about rescue piece, I'm thinking about how many people got put out of work or had to change jobs, you know, that were in hospitality or in childcare or in a business that didn't make it. Now, they got to be retrained or, or even, you know, housing situation or something that really speaks to the core of the people who were impacted the most with the pandemic. So, I just kind of, council, as we look at that, some of the, some of the things we need to do, do we invest in brick and mortar that banks finance or we invest in people that they don't finance?
Mr. Mayor, part of the discussion that we had with the council early on, and this is great conversation and good debate, is our goal is to spend as much of the ARPA money as fast as we can for eligible purposes. The federal government, based upon what our view is and our consultants' review is, that these are eligible uses. As soon as we spend this forty million dollars or before, we're going to have our handout asking for more. And one of the things that we're looking for, those large projects that we can get up and running and completed within a six-year time period that we've been told that we've got to perform for ARPA. But it is always a question, as you, as you say, you know, how is this tied back to the pandemic? And the government has, we believe, answered that for us because it's putting people to work. This is also, it supports your Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which this was the number one area. And we, and it still have money in some of the other tranches of the council committees. One was looking at childcare subsidies for those workers. And there were some others, I'm not doing justice tonight because my memory's a little off, but we have a lot of that in there, but the real goal, and this is one of the things that we, we tried to stress with the council early on is, the sooner we can appropriately expense this money, the better. We were told by the legislative delegation that they have probably close to a billion dollars sitting at the state right now that they've got to expense before December thirty-first. Hence, the list I've asked you guys for of projects. And if we're able to take four million dollars or six million dollars, and, and that would consume that first tranche of money of twenty with some other projects and things like that. But the mayor, you make an excellent point as to how do we tie that back to make sure that we are impactful. But we have competing goals on this too.
Right. Well, and then before I go to Councilmember Kinston and Ingram, it was one example that I wanted to use that Councilmember here asked about, where we talked about, where we partially funded something that was, what, what was your, your previous question referencing, Councilmember?
It was the corridor studies and, I mean, the corridor projects, and it was the shelters and the benches.
So, so if, can you go to the investment on the benches? So, I think what his question was, which dovetails into my question, is what was transit's assessment as to how many benches and shelters it need? If we could do it all, what needs to be done?
Yes, sir. One of the things that we will bring back to you guys-
And I understand we got a twenty-eighty match.
Well, it's not only that. When I tell y'all that we have been cooking with gas over the last five years, y'all don't believe me, but just keep listening to me and hopefully you will. One of the impediments that we have to putting out shelters and benches is that we don't have sidewalks. And so, you've accelerated the sidewalk plan, which is like on Rose Hill Road right now, if you go down, you see those pads we're putting in. So, we, we were moving so fast with so many benches and shelters that we had to come to y'all to actually lower the limit. The, the industry standard may have been fifteen boarding and a lightings. We've lowered that again, within the transit response, so we can actually now have more sites that qualify. And so, in addition to them now having more sites that qualify, we still have got to make sure that it is on areas, number one, where we have sidewalks, number two, where we have ADA improvements, which you have money in there for that, and then number three, where we have the routes. And so, and those are remaining on the corridors. But happy and excited to bring y'all back to plan for what that looks like over the next five years.
Yes.
But a lot of that is tied too with where we have sidewalks.
Well, and which brings, which brings another point. So, the sidewalk plan required, if I can remember right, fifteen million dollars. And we've been killing it. As you said, we put four in with some additional money we had, we're putting six in proposed this year. So, that covers two-thirds of the fifteen that it said to make this a walk, to complete the walkability study, okay? The walkability study is a pivotal part to the benches, which you just tied that together. So, is eight million dollars better financed by the bank to go ahead and complete the walkability, which also covers your, your benches and, and shelter situation? Or do you pay cash for a building that can be financed? And so, that's just something I'm posing to the council for later discussion, but I'll go to Councilmember Kinston and then Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. And you actually just touched on what I was waiting to speak about, which was the ADA accessibility improvement. Because it says that forty, forty-eight point six percent of those do, don't meet the ADA. So, my question is, and I want to make sure I understand, is you're saying that we have a plan for over the next five years. But with the ADA accessibility, if there's no pads for ADA, then that puts citizens in the street to get to the buses. So, I'm trying to figure out, is there a way that that could be accelerated to get that taken care of so that we're not, one, you know, out of compliance with it, and two, not putting citizens in harms? That was one of my questions.
Well, we, we will definitely can take a look at how we could accelerate that. But again, to toot the staff's horn, we brought you guys the ADA accessibility thing. It's, let's see somewhere, yeah, that you guys adopted. And we're one of the few states, cities in the state I'd say that is fully compliant at the moment with having at least an awareness of where we are on this. But that's a really great question, and we can bring you back some information maybe at the next meeting about how long it would take us to become fully compliant. In some of those areas, it could be, and I'm not going to say what it could be, but we can definitely come back with information on that ADA accessibility.
Okay. And then the other question that I have under the parks and rec on page one oh eight, where it talks about the, the Western Dog Parks itself, the question, it doesn't show any additional money for improvements to that. Is there anything else or is it, I mean, it's completed, it's done, and that's it?
There was not any additional funding requested for those projects in the five-year period.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask you a clarifying question to make sure that I'm tracking properly. So, when we're talking about the, the brick and mortar building, the brick and mortar of the Makerspace, and what was it else? The Sherwood Recreation Center. And we typically follow a model of how we, we finance that. Basically, what I, in my hearing is, for brick and mortar items that are on this CIP, follow the, follow what we normally do to free up that money that we have and add it to something that could be accelerated. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking that. But then let me follow up on this. How did, how did those two, or did council give direction to add this to, add those two to the CIP?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Well, we gave direction to do it when we gave consensus, but we didn't give a funding source. And so, that's what-
And this is you guys coming back to say if you want it in this funding source or not, correct?
Right.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're seeking concurrence from you guys to say, is this something that you would like us to pursue as an ARPA-eligible project?
And then, okay, with that, let me, let me probably interject this. Seeing that we do have a, I'm sorry, never mind, it's out of the scope of what that bond is for, so never mind. That's the infrastructure and public safety. However, yeah, that's out of that scope, so never mind. Thank you for that clarification, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, any other questions for Ms. Olivera? All right. Keep moving, ma'am. No, no. Was this the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Well, well, council, I would, I would ask, as we look to meeting number three, which is for, just for us to get a little further into some of the items that we have additional questions about or wanted to make modifications to. This is just a proposal from budget and staff and the manager's office to what we actually fund. So, I would ask, as we do this, if we could consider Makerspace and Sherwood Park for further discussion at, at budget, budget meeting three.
Okay.
Possibly.
Are you making a motion or?
No, I was just asking for, I can't make a motion. I was just asking for consideration for that, but I-
Can I ask you a question on that? Okay.
So, okay, Councilmember Wright, you had a question?
Yes, ma'am. Sir, I'm next.
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to ask a question for clarification because I wanted to see if we can add something to the parking lot as far as a facility for sports, basketball, for boys and girls, team tryouts. And I wanted to express that and I wanted to see if I could speak with Mr. Gibson for a moment to get some clarification. And I wanted to see if we could do that. Now, the mayor mentioned about asking for things that we wanted to kind of pursue out of this budget. So, Mr. Gibson, can I ask you a question, sir?
You're just getting to work, sir.
I'm a little upset for being here.
And, and I wanted to get, you know, a feel of, of where we are with this based upon our revenue bond that we, we dealt with, with the, with the parks, Parks and Rec bond. But in my studies and research, sixty million kids play and use sports each year, which generates billions of dollars across the, the country. And regardless of the economy, we, we noticed that sports are among the few things that stay popular in our community regardless of what the situation is. Children looks at a chance to, to hang out with their friends, activities, and have fun, and, and which is a universal appeal. So, I was thinking, me and my wife went to a tournament with my grandson in Virginia. I don't know if it's, what is AAU, what is that, the, the youth sports, let's see what it is. And we drove all the way to Richmond for a tournament and came all the way back to Fayetteville that same evening to see our grandson play. And I, the facility that was there was awesome. It was about fifteen whole courts in one facility, which really generated a, a great economic impact for that city, which gave kids something to do in a safe place to, to play and to really develop all kinds of skills in sports, and I don't have to tell you that. But the reason I'm asking you, is this something that you feel based upon two ninety-five, ninety-five position where we sit in Fayetteville would be attractive as putting a facility of, of that type here in Fayetteville to become one of the destinations for, for tourism and for tournaments, creating, you know, economic impact for our community? How's that feel?
Well, I mean, anytime that you, you add that kind of value to a city or recreation, the tournament world is, you know, when we're on ninety-five, it's, it's open to us. The, the only thing that I, that I have to stick to whenever I'm bringing anything to the manager is, we did a master plan. And, and I have to use that master plan as what the citizens have guided us to and what their needs are. And anytime, just like we're doing the tennis center, just like we're doing the, the sports complex, if, if you have an opportunity to provide that kind of value, then you turn right back around and says, okay, what economic impact can these facilities have in our community? A multi-use facility of eighty thousand square feet where you can do whatever you want to do, change it into whatever you want to change it into, it does have value. Currently, in our master plan, it's not high on the list. So, if we were to interject something like that and, and how we move it up the list, bringing that to the manager and saying, this is what we need, I don't know how I would justify that based on our master plan and what our needs are from one through five, one through six. So, I, I don't know. And if, if we had another opportunity, there's, I've been invited to see a facility already like that in this community. We just need to figure out how we add value to it, how we make that something that we need to do. So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have that conversation here.
You could while you're up there as well. We are tracking many of the Parks and Rec bond projects, and all of those are over budget. And we need to come back and probably level set on what we'll be able to not accomplish, we'll be able to accomplish it all, but what other additional amenities we'll be able to put on it or build out fully. And we also, what was the number two project in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, or number one and one and two?
The, the number one is the Aquatic Center.
And that's about what?
Probably about twenty-five million, depending on how elaborate you make it.
About forty million, Michael. But Councilmember Wright, to your point, very similar to, as the council did recently with the Sherwood Park, if this is in interest of council, the time for you guys to say, we would like- um, if this is in interest of council, the time for you guys to say, we would like some more information on it so that we can then look at updating the Parks Recreation Master Plan, you did it with the Glenville Lake Connector, the trail around Glenville Lake. You added that to the master plan, which then helped us establish that as a priority for you. And we actually have that primary program to be funded sometime in the next five years.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's what I was getting at through, uh, city manager, to see if council had interest in a project of that nature that we can add it to our master plan in the future. Because I think that would bring a lot of value, uh, to our children in our community as well, so-
Appreciate it.
We'll look at that in the future.
All right, um, so did have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Olivera.
Yes, sir.
So the, oh, did I have you? All right, Councilmember Ingram, you're not gonna come after.
Thank you, so, uh-
Oh, Herr and then Banks McGlaughlin, Banks McGlaughlin and then Colvin.
Okay, so, uh, I think, uh, at the end of your question about the, uh, our third meeting, I think you answered it, but I do want to touch on what, uh, Councilmember Herr, um, Wright was talking about, the, uh, the basketball courts. When we, gosh, I think, well, two or one and a half years ago, when we were talking about the build-out and the design of the tennis courts, I brought up a point of maybe having it split, the design split, for the new tennis courts that are supposed to go off a filter plant. Maybe we have half basketball and half tennis courts. And that was not favorable to the council, and the point I brought up half was because of what, uh, Mr. Gibson said, it was not a high desire, but when you look around the community of Fayetteville, North Carolina, it is a high desire, just as, uh, tennis courts is a high desire. And so I understand us wanting to look at national numbers and, and whatnot, but we have to also focus on the quality of life of our Fayetteville community residents. And so if it is to come up again, um, as Councilmember Wright has brought it up, I really would hope that this council does support that because our community loves basketball, and we produce NBA and NFL players. So thank you, Councilmember Wright, for bringing that up again, but I do hope that's something that we can move forward on.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram, uh, and as Michael said, there is, uh, a great facility just opening, Hope Mills. I know we do Cumberland County rec and some type of partnerships from, with municipalities from time to time, so. I, I definitely would like to have further discussion about that, maybe in the, in the parking lot meeting. Uh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. This one was for, um, Michael Gibson. Listen. But I know, um, it was mentioned, the, uh, one of the first priorities was the Aquatic Center, and I did want to, um, mention that, um, I'm part of the Parks and Recreation, the liaison, and they'll be here next week, uh, for a presentation. But my question is, you know, about the Lakewood Park, um, the splash pad, do you have an update of that yet?
I, I mean, I can talk about it here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because, um, we're, we're probably two days away from testing, turning it on and running it, make sure all the chemicals are right, getting the health department to come out and give us our stamp of approval. Um, once we do that, we'll make sure that the manager understands that it's ready to go, um, and then we'll set up that ribbon cutting and it's on.
Okay, one, one more thing, are we, um, doing anything as far as the, um, the trail, the walking trail, do you know?
Are you talking about at Lakewood?
Yes, at the same location.
We ran out of money.
Oh, okay, um, well, council, well, council, that'll be something I'll be interested in bringing up since they already put a splash pad out there and it's a, a walking trail in the area, so, just to throw that out there.
They'll be right at the trail.
No, we got plenty of money. Didn't y'all see this presentation? All right, um, so thank you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. So I did have a question for you, Ms. Olivera, just, just so council can, can understand where we're starting from. Every year, five point oh seven cents of the forty-nine point five, whatever that number is-
Forty-nine point nine five, yes, sir.
Yeah, goes towards CIP.
Yes, sir.
So every year, we're throwing five cents, which equates to, what's it, a million two per penny?
It's one point four three cents per penny.
Which is, what, seven, about seven million dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
So we're putting that up toward the funding of these, these CIP items, but now you're giving some relief to that. How much do we have in the, and this may not be the right terminology, in the CIP fund balance? So how much have we put up aside for stuff that we're now taking off of the equation?
So that was the five point eight million that I mentioned, that as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, recorded in our financial statements, we have five point eight million dollars, which is assigned for debt payments for the CIP in future years. And then we had two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars unassigned in our CIP, and if you-
Six million dollars roughly?
Yes, sir.
Of debt service payments put up?
Yes, sir, reserved for debt service.
All right.
So, which takes us back to this slide, which, where you, if you look at the far left, we're in twenty twenty-two, see how high up our debt payments are? They're over ten million dollars for the current fiscal year. So when we take those big items out of our CIP, we're creating this funding cushion in the outer years that we can use for other things.
Totally get it. So what I want to know is, if we're accelerating payments for debt and projects, um, next year, if, if they, if the council passes your proposal here, what happens to the six million dollars that's sitting in there?
It still has to go for debt. That is for existing debts.
So that could be to pay a mortgage on a brick and mortar place, like a rec center or something like that?
So I can tell you what it goes for, because I knew you were gonna ask.
Did you?
I did, I did. I said, he's, he's gonna say, what is the big green section for? So we, every year, part of our funding strategy is we finance vehicles and our radio replacements for our eight hundred megahertz. So all of the things in the TIP, um, we have to find a way to pay for those. Banks aren't gonna loan us money for those types of, of items, projects. So we take some of our vehicles that we're purchasing outright, and we use them as collateral for a financing. We take that vehicle financing money, we do our vehicle financings for four years. So they, they fall off every four years. It's a quick turnaround. So some of that is for vehicle financings that we've done in prior years. And the big, um, tan section is ones that we're planning to do starting this year and moving forward because our plan is a five-year plan and further. So we start calculating, okay, we're gonna probably need to finance X amount in future years of vehicles. It's also for fire stations nineteen and twelve, where we built those and we financed those two fire stations. We're still paying the debt on those two buildings. Our Lakewood Pool, we financed that, and we're just making payments on that. Our Franklin and Hay Street parking decks were financed, and we have to continue making the remaining-
But, but my point is, we get the same amount each year, so I'm just talking about what you have this year. So you have about six million dollars in the bank, but each year you get enough to pay those things or, or a good portion of it. So you bring in seven, but you just accelerated some projects, which you won't need all of that seven to pay those, those incremental debts. So where, what's the six million?
As we stop issuing debts, future debts, then the debt that we have falls off. And so the, the difference in the seven million we get and what we have to pay out for that debt, we keep in our reserve. That's how we're building the capacity to do the big things and to make the ARPA money go as far as we can make it go. So if you look, our break-even year is gonna be in twenty twenty-five, when it looks like our debt really drops down, but we're still collecting those dollars.
Okay, all right, uh, Councilmember Duckett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Olivera, I remember on the baseball stadium, we borrowed maybe ten or twelve million. City manager, I wanted you to be listening on this, um, from our risk management fund. Um, so, um, is there any way we can accelerate paying that money back? Or is all of that factored in? Because it looks like we're, what does that blue line represent, like three million dollars? Because I think-
So the blue line actually is the stadium funding repayments. So you see it, um, it would be flat if our green was flat, as evidenced by the outer years, fiscal year twenty-seven, because we, we have obligated four hundred thousand dollars of debt repayment for that stadium funding loan every year.
For thirty years, if, okay.
Yes, sir.
But I know that we had to borrow some money from our risk management fund that helps pay for stormwater and hurricane damage and the stuff that we can't predict, but we need to have a rainy day fund.
Yes, sir. We're almost finished paying back our risk management fund for those, those types of things. Not for our stadium funding plan, but for those types of things. We're almost finished with those smaller, um, little ankle-biter type borrowings that we had borrowed from ourselves.
So if we wanted to accelerate our paying back our risk management fund, that, that whole grid would kind of move up towards the red five point oh seven cents line. Is that a good assumption?
It would move down further, yes, sir, down. It would make more whites, white area in between the, the colors and the red line.
And it would reduce our fund balance, we'd have to, to get it from our savings or whatever, if we had an extra money above what we had budgeted?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
And the light blue line there, in between the tan and the dark blue, is the fire station for financing that we've just recently done.
Excellent. The only comment I would make, Mr. Mayor, is to the council, is that this, um, the, the city manager appears to be correct in that we are cooking with gas, meaning we have additional revenues that we really not had budgeted. So we, we are, this council has been prudent in, in its, in its money management, so, um, I, that's, uh, that's very positive.
Say that again for Mr. Futch.
Yes, this council has, has been prudent in our money management. Uh, Ms. McDonald and I sit on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board. We met yesterday in Raleigh for about five hours, going over management of about thirty cities that technically are bankrupt. And one town is actually very close by to the city of Fayetteville, and of course, I won't say the name of the city, but I think a lot of us know who it is. And, um, we can be very thankful that we are managing, uh, as tightly as we possibly can and making, I think, good investments. We still have some other investments we need to make. We'll discuss over these next few months, um, if we're fortunate to continue serving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Question, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Herr.
As, and, and it is always good to hear that there are additional fundings and savings that are, are there. As we move into our next meeting, um, I thought we had, I thought I saw someone over there at one time, uh, writing on the board for our parking lot, but I was wanting us to kind of have a, a, a conversation of something that I've been bringing up, uh, over the last few weeks when we were looking at rescue and aqua, uh, and, and those type of fundings, was, uh, since we have a, one of our targeted priorities is housing, affordable housing, and as we have this major employer that's coming, uh, with us there at the, uh, Military Business Area off of Santa Fe, wouldn't this be a great opportunity for us to have discussions for infrastructure improvements in, within the Bonny Doon area? We're gonna, we're looking at housing that's gonna be needed, that can be closed, uh, some of that area. I think the water is there, but in some of the area, it is not sewer, for example. Uh, there are septic tanks. Thank you, council, for the, the big support that you gave in helping us to close down the, um, the mobile homes, but now we do have property there that has a great possibilities that can improve that part of the city, right there at two ninety-five, headed right to ninety-five. I would like to put that on my parking lot, uh, list of discussion for our next meeting.
Yes, sir. I have an infrastructure improvements in Bonny Doon.
And, and Mr. Hewitt, um, as you talk about that, I know you had a housing study, you know, council, uh, many of you may or may not know, we, we've always invested a lot in studies, and a lot of times they went rack on the shelf because we didn't have the resources to execute. So now you have a housing study, I know it includes Bonny Doon, I'm with, I'm with Councilmember Herr. I don't think any area of the city should be, should look as if it's not a part of the city. And I know we, we have to work with PWC on this sewer, in, uh, infrastructure stuff. But when is the housing plan, which includes some of those targeted areas like Bonny Doon, coming back?
Mayor, thank you, and Councilman Herr, um, uh, in anticipation of, um, us also doing an affordable housing bond, um, we have on your agenda for Monday's work session, um, an item titled Housing Program Policies and Procedures. And included in that, it shows, um, Mayor, to your point, that we did the housing study last year, um, and that was adopted. Um, you also prioritized the annual action plans in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Chris Colley was here just recently about that. And then we also, um, directed, um, us again, I said, to twelve million dollars, um, on the bond, housing bond in November. So on Monday, um, we probably will be able to talk to Chris a little bit more about that, what it looks like, um, not only for Bonny Doon, but for around the city. What you, what you end up with now is you have a plan, and that plan showed that you were short some twenty thousand affordable housing units.
Yes.
What you also have is council's given direction that you want to put before the voters, twelve million dollars of money to help in that regard. What you've also done is, and I can't remember exactly, and Chris is not here at the moment, but recently you actually programmed money to assist with some of the housing, uh, trust fund and things like that. So with council's positive action, hopefully, um, after Monday's work session, you have all of the elements in place for us to hang the open for business sign out front of City Hall for people who want to do affordable housing in our community. And you're right, Bonny Doon is, is wonderfully situated to be part of that, and I think that on Monday, y'all will be real pleased with exactly how far y'all have come over the last two years.
Thank you.
And, um, did want to also ask the Day Center, Homeless Day Center. I know we were getting, we got a million from the state, we put aside some, is that fully funded to be operable?
Um, we actually, um, are gonna be, um, finding about another, I think, million dollars for that. Um, uh, and we can update you on that on Monday as well.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin has been working with, uh, the county commissioners in homeless eradication. We just saw the recent article that showed that we've had a huge bump in, uh, in homelessness-
Sixty percent in the year.
In the, in the community. So I hope that that's on the parking lot to be addressed, uh, as we look for, you know, uh, to look to, uh, finalize this budget. Go to Councilmember Wright.
Just have a, a question. Uh, Rayford Road is a DOT road, uh, going into Rayford. Uh, one of the neighborhoods, uh, in our re-districting, or relining of districts, fell into District Seven, which is the last neighborhood going into Rayford, uh, on the county line, on the left side. I, I got some calls from some of the residents there, and they were concerned. And my question is, can we allocate funding, or do we talk to DOT reference to a buffer? Because, you know, the traffic, uh, in, in the neighborhood is right on that major DOT road, which is a major highway. And, and in my thinking, when she first asked me, I'm like, you know, but then as I begin to think about it, I said it could be some grave, grave concerns with, uh, DOT road that close, you know, four-lane highway to a neighborhood, maybe about thirty, thirty feet from homes, fifty feet from homes. Can there be a buffer, is there financing and funding to put some type of buffer there to, um, to buffer the sound and the noise? Because she said, we can't even sleep, my, my, my bedroom is right near, near the road and all night long, all night long. Does that, is that something that we can consider?
We will check on that, but I would say, probably not. Um, if the house backs up to Rayford Road, the house was probably built with Rayford Road there. And it may have just expanded. Um, I think it was, may have been you, sir, that recalls all the concerns that we had from residents whose houses were now exposed to two ninety-five. And NC DOT, um, basically said any, had something about where they might be able to put up sign walls and where they may not be able to put up sign walls, based upon whether the project had already been permitted or laid out and stuff like that. But specifically for that neighborhood on Rayford Road, um, I'll ask, um, development service, I mean, public services to, to ask. But I, but I'm, I'm very hesitant and would not think that would be something they'd be able to do for one neighborhood.
Right, so in situations like that, that we find, probably they'll come out, do a survey or whatever. I, I don't know how they deal with that.
Probably not even that, but I mean, we will, we will convey- But I mean, we will, we will convey the request, and if you have the citizen's name and, and stuff, we'll be happy to connect them with our NC DOT counterparts. But chances are, they would say, um, an in-town road, um, such as Rayford Road and the house that backs up to Rayford Road. They, um, I doubt they would put up a sound wall or some, or even a barrier.
Neighborhood, it's just not one home, but yeah, please.
Yeah, we can, is Lee here? Uh, Lee?
Was here. Lee, there, there he is.
Okay, thank you. He's got it.
All right, and, and before we do that, council, and I know we're kind of, uh, getting toward the conclusion to, to our parking lot meeting. I hope that we would, one thing that I think we haven't talked a lot about, which is a high, high concern of the citizens, is public safety. I know that, um, you know, with the recent violence, uh, we have a, a, a real specific demographic from an age perspective that's involved in either the victims or the perpetrators of it. Um, so, at-risk youth, uh, mitigation is something that I hope that we would consider. I would like to see on the parking lot for the next conversation, uh, to see if we can catch some of those folks, you know, just talking to some of the organizations that deal with youth mentorship. Uh, Boys and Girls Club ends their, their work at fourteen years of age. There's, there's some gaps there, you know, and, and hopefully, we can create, uh, something for some partnerships. I know that's not really the city lane, but it definitely impacts, uh, the police chief's ability to keep a safe community. We have the, the twenty-five and, and thirty and under, uh, a population that's, that's victims and perpetrators a lot of times. So, hopefully, that'll be considered. And the last thing I'll say about it is, um, next generation workforce, um.
That's good.
Tier one community. Three major factors to that are, are wages, um, you know, avalanche tax value and unemployment rate. And I know that we were, uh, impacted heavily with our heavy service industry with COVID. A lot of people got out of the hospitality industries of restaurants and those kind of things. And we have a next generation of people we need to train for tomorrow's jobs. And I think to make us competitive, um, we need to talk about that. There, there's some, some, uh, companies that are, that are training folks in cyber and drones and AI and different things that I think we can, we can partner and play, play a role with some of the other people who are specializing in that space. But we've left workforce development to the county. Um, they have a different, they have a different, uh, goal in mind. Um, I think they've even partnered with the COG to, to take that off of their plate. So, we really have, have, uh, have to really get a little bit more forceful than that. So, I hope that we'll consider that next week. But Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
I guess we were thinking alike, um, Mayor, that was one of my, uh, questions regarding with the youth. When we talk about workforce, uh, workforce also, I know myself and Councilmember Wright, um, presented, uh, a item to employ homeless individuals. And I think we were doing like a pilot, I believe the city was. And I wanted to see if we can, yeah, I think, yeah, I think they hired one or two people, I believe. But I wanted to see if we can, um, if there's funding for, well, we know it's funding there, to see if we can expand that program and, um, partner with, um, other individuals. That was that.
All right, council, any other items?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'd like to get one more in. We're early, we're early, we're early.
All right, Councilmember, uh, Herr and then Dawkins.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and Mr. City Manager and Mrs. Olivera, please help me. If you would take us back to, uh, the funding from DOT, uh, I think it was, I guess all of that goes into the CIP. Where is it? Which one is it?
The four point three million? It's right in the middle, the pedestrian safety improvements?
Yes, now, this is my question. I've been in some deep email conversations back and forth with our, uh, DOT folk. And hopefully, we, we will talk tomorrow. But I've been having a concern with citizens being able to intersect off of Santa Fe from either the Cottonade side or the Oponne Rose side. And I've been dealing with them about a signal light. None of the discussions have been very highlighting, uh, for, for the citizens. And so, I've been asking them to change their policy, because the criteria of the policy doesn't always match up. You know, it's not a hundred wrecks or people getting hit or whatever the case may be. So, my question is this, with that funding that we received from the state and what I'm looking at here, now with the pedestrian safety improvements, can that funding be used for a signal light?
Sir, that, that four point three has specific, um, projects for it already. Um, that, and those projects were presented to council when you guys appropriated the funding.
I know, I thought I could put it on the, up there on the mail, uh, the parking lot in some way. You all could fix that with all this extra money Johnny said that we have coming in. I'd like to have some of that.
But we can, um, is Lee here? Lee, are you here?
Yeah, I've, I've been having discussions with them. Lee has been involved in the discussions and been positive.
And Councilmember Herr, you, you know, um, like Mr. Dawkins, how long it takes for a light north view.
Yes, sir.
And so, I would, we'd be remiss if we put it on the list and think that we're going to be able to do something there.
I know.
But I know you're advocating for it, as you always do, but, and we will ask them again where it's at. But the chances, if they've said no, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I've already had that discussion and used to talk to them. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ingle, real quick, before we go to Councilmember Dawkins.
Uh, is, is Chief Hawkins here? Oh, oh, okay, thank you. So, talking about violent crimes, we, we, we purchased the license plate readers, and I think you might know I'm getting asked about. We purchased the license plate readers, correct, and that's been very helpful. The city of Durham had a conversation about ShotSpotter re- recently, and I think it's going to move forward. I think we had a conversation about a, a conversation. And I'm interested, and maybe this is a parking lot-ish, uh, thing, um, to see if that's something that could help us with crime and being able to, you know, m- move things along faster when it comes down to, uh, gun violence. Um, but, but, what's, I'm sorry? No?
Gun shot detection, um, technology, we are already moving with, um, a vendor.
Okay.
And hooking up that process. Um, but the conversation for a specific vendor, that's a secondary recommendation. Um, but that will require more funding.
There, that's my parking lot item. So, I would, I would like for us to consider that. Um, as we see our, our peer cities and we are also trying to figure out, you know, what can best help? That, that, that's my parking lot item to get, uh, look at additional funding for that vendor.
But for clarity, we are still moving with the first one, which is Accium, and we are in the process of, um, um, getting it connected. So, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager and then Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, sir. Um, um, before we leave, I'd ask Kelly to read the items on the parking lot and would, um, remind, um, and would ask council that for any items that you're seeking new funding or expanded funding, we presented you a balanced budget and it's a balanced budget you've got to adopt. And so, we would be happy, um.
What'd you say?
We presented you a balanced budget and y'all have to adopt a balanced budget. And so, if there is something that you want to do more of, then either we have to identify revenues that are one-time things. Yes, sir. And so, depending on the size of the items that are being asked for, it might be also good to look at if there's something that you want us to do less of, if y'all are trying to add more to the budget. That's just primarily.
Point taken. Before I go to Councilman Dawkins for the benediction, uh, Councilmember, uh, Kinston?
I'm almost afraid to ask now, City Manager, but I'm going to put it out there. Um, the beautification projects, um, additional funding outside of those neighborhoods that don't qualify for grants, um, if we can add that to the parking lot.
We can, and just briefly, Mayor, on that too, if we, we have, we're going to put in place a practice this upcoming fiscal year. When we run out of money with the, for, um, general fund dollars for beautification, we will come back to council at that point in time and ask y'all if y'all want to allocate more money, instead of waiting until the next fiscal year. That's something that we've learned, that that program has been very popular, and, um, we can make that pledge to you. So, what's in the budget, in the balanced budget, and then if we need to come back to y'all for money in October or February, we can do that. So.
All right, Councilman Dawkins, benediction?